A quorum being present, the special town meeting will come to order. We have a slight problem in that the gentleman who is running our sound system isn't here yet. He's on his way. And hopefully, by the time I finish talking, he'll be here so that everybody else will be able to talk too. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise to recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming tonight. I'll briefly state our customary procedural points. There are several stationary microphones around the room. If you want to speak, please go to the mic nearest your seat, wait to be recognized, and then give the meeting your name and address if we don't already have them. I'm Alan Wilson. I ask that you stand when you speak, if you can, and this applies to town officials at the front, as well as to those on the floor of the meeting. Excuse me. The tellers also have portable mics for anyone who might have difficulty reaching the stationary ones. And if that's the case, please raise your hand and we'll make sure a microphone comes to you. Speakers must remember to direct their remarks to me as moderator and not to other town officials or voters. They must also limit their remarks to two minutes or less unless they've received my permission in advance to speak longer. My intention is to call on every voter who desires to speak on an issue before the meeting. But if the motion for the previous question, that's the motion to cut off debate, is properly introduced and seconded, under our bylaws, it's not debatable. I'll call directly for a vote without further discussion. And I'll accept the motion for the previous question only when a voter rises and is recognized solely for that purpose. I won't accept this motion from one who makes a statement on the merits of an issue and then immediately moves to close the door on contrary views. You should have picked up a yellow card as you checked in. This identifies you as a voter. If the electronic voting system should fail, and I hope it doesn't, and we have a counted hand vote, please hold up your card to make sure that you're counted. Most matters require a majority vote. The motion for the previous question requires a two-thirds vote, and by statute, amending the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. Certain other questions require two-thirds, or in some cases, a greater proportion, and I'll explain those if they arise. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us tonight Gregory Fetischfield, Town Administrator, the heads of most of the town departments, Pamela Bodwin, Superintendent of the Manchester Essex Regional School District, and Robin Stein, Town Council with KP Law. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if needed. Once we've established a quorum, as we now have, I'll assume a quorum continues to be present until it's challenged and found lacking by an actual count. The procedures we follow reflect provisions of the Massachusetts Acts and General Laws, Article 2 of the town's general bylaw, a book called Town Meeting Time, and the traditions of the town. It's unlawful to smoke on school grounds. I ask that you turn off or mute cell phones and other electronic devices. The meeting is being videotaped by 1623 Studios and is being recorded. I want to thank the following, excuse me, the following residents who are serving as volunteers tonight. Assistant Town Clerk Diane Buco, Emma Brown, Martha Farmer, Ellen Flatley, Christina Holtz, Tom Keigho, Carolyn Kelly, Judy LaSpesa, Rachel Masterson, Kurt Melden, Melanie Oldman, Elaine Person, Kathy Ryan, Joanne Shan, Elaine Taylor, Linda Taylor, Christopher Thomas, Gretchen Wood, helping me by timing the speakers, and Tiffany Marletta, running the electronic voting system. Thank you all for serving the town. I now recognize Ann Harris, the Chair of the Select Board, for opening comments.
Hello, and thank you all for being here. One sort of procedural issue. If you looked at the warrant, you may find that at the end, in the last four articles, they are present by petition of the Select Board, and yet we don't recommend all of them. What happened is that petitions were provided in a timely fashion. There was a question about the procedure used in accepting them, and the Select Board felt that rather than have a debate about the property, the propriety of their being on the warrant, that we would put them on the warrant in our name because they were of interest to the town and deserved to be heard and debated. The warrant isn't very long, but it is likely to be, some articles are likely to be contentious. I should be trying to keep in mind Donna First's message on Facebook. Remember kindness tonight. Anyone who's prepared to spend hours sitting in uncomfortable seats, listening to internal arguments about what are, in a global scale, minutia, everyone here wants the best for the town. Enough said for the time being. Thank you, and let's get to work.
Thank you, Ann. There were three handouts you should have received as you checked in. The first, prepared by the Select Board's office, contains the warrant with the motions that will be made under all the warrant articles. Since we'll be voting on those motions, it's especially important that everyone have that handout. If you don't have it, please raise your hand, and one of the tellers will give it to you. The second handout was prepared by the citizens who petitioned to include Articles 12, 13, and 14 on the warrant. And finally, the third was a series of frequently asked questions prepared by the MBA Task Force, the town's MBA Task Force, on MBTA zoning. We'll be voting electronically at this meeting. You should have received a keypad like this as you checked in. We're going to use the keypads for all votes. I'll announce when the voting period for each motion opens and ends, and while we're voting, a box in the upper right-hand corner of the screen behind me will also show the 15-second voting period counting down. I think it's actually going to be on the left-hand side. Press 1 to vote yes, 2 to vote no, or 3 to abstain on the motion under consideration. If you change your mind, just press the other button. The computer records only your last choice. And when the voting period ends, the screen will show the number of yes and no votes and abstentions, and also display the totals graphically. You'll also be able to see the voting display on the portable screens around the room. If you need to leave early, please exit through the lobby where you checked in and return the handset so we can keep an accurate tally of how many voters are still here. And we'll be comparing that tally to the number of votes on each motion to make sure that we're counting everybody. When the meeting ends, you can exit through any of the doors. The handsets are in sleep mode until a button is pressed, so the screen on the handset will be blank until you vote. After you vote, the LED in the upper right corner will turn green, indicating that your vote was received, and the screen will display 1A for yes, 2B for no, or 3C for abstain. The device then goes back to sleep. The town clerk and her team checked the handsets thoroughly and tested them all, and we tested them in the room this afternoon, so it's very unlikely that any will fail to work. But if you don't see the appropriate display after voting, or you experience any other problem, you can go back to the check-in station and get another. We'll conduct two test votes to make sure everyone is comfortable with the system. First question: Should Bill Belichick retire after this season? Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. The voting period is open. It's overwhelming. 270 vote yes, 64 vote no, and 30 people don't watch football. 32, sorry. Is Robert Kraft here tonight? Second question is one for Thanksgiving. Do you like pumpkin pie? Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. More similarly overwhelming on that. 219 like pumpkin pie, 107 don't, and 20 don't care. Are there any questions about how to vote electronically? The voting system will produce an anonymous log of how each handset was used on each vote. Any voter who wishes will be able to go to the town clerk's office and determine how his or her votes were recorded, but the town won't create a record linking voters' names with individual handsets, so all votes are secret. That means that if you want to check your voting record with the town clerk, you'll need to save the device's identifier. It's the six-character alphanumeric code on the back of the handset, following the words "device ID" next to the QR code. If you have a smartphone and you want to check it, you can just take a photo of the back of the clicker. Given the agenda we have and the level of interest in many of the warrant articles, it's possible that we'll need two evenings to complete our business, although I will do my best to finish tonight. If it becomes clear that we'll need another night to finish, I don't intend to keep us here beyond a reasonable hour. In that event, in consultation with the Select Board, I'll give the meeting an opportunity to adjourn by 10:30, provided that we've accomplished enough at that point to be confident of completing our business in one more session. If we do need a second night, the Select Board will propose that we reconvene here tomorrow evening. I want to remind everyone of Manchester's tradition of civil and respectful debate at town meeting. It's a tradition that I will uphold as long as I'm moderator. There are bound to be differences of opinion, but disagreement doesn't require being disagreeable. Personal attacks have no place here. It's critical that we engage as neighbors, recognizing, as Ann said, that we all want the best for Manchester. We'll begin with Article 1. This is a proposal to amend the general bylaw to change the date of the annual town meeting from the first Monday in April to the fourth Monday in April. And John Round moves, and Brian Solacey seconds the motion as presented in the article. Remarks, Mr. Round.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening to you all. A lot of time and work goes into the preparation of our town's annual budget, and we need more time. This article moves our annual town meeting date from the first Monday to the fourth Monday in April. The three extra weeks will enable us to assemble the most accurate budget numbers possible before asking you to approve the upcoming fiscal year expenditures. Often, it's not until the very end of March, or even later, that budgets for such items as employee and retirement health care insurance are known. This makes it difficult to have the right numbers ready for an early April vote. We recommend your approval for Article 1.
Thank you, John. This is a simple majority vote to approve an amendment to the general bylaw. Is there discussion? Yes. I'm sorry, that mic doesn't seem to be on. Just our technical friend is about to help it. Bob, you arrived just in time.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Irma Hale, 17 Lincoln Street. The fourth Monday in April in 2024 is the first night of Passover, which means many Jewish citizens will be participating in Seder and will be unable to attend town meeting. Therefore, I make a motion for an amendment to the article saying, except if the fourth Monday falls on the first or second night of Passover.
Well, let me explain. I appreciate your comment very much. There is, under state law, under state statute, the Select Board has the authority to postpone a town meeting, no matter what the bylaw says. And their practice in the past has been to do so when it conflicted with Passover. So, and I expect they would continue to do that. We can certainly propose that amendment if you want to, but in light of the past practice, you may not feel you need it.
I mean, if that's the practice, then that's fine. I can drop it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, press 2. Abstain, press 3. And the voting period is open. And the vote is 344 in favor, 13 opposed, with 2 abstentions. So the motion prevails. Article 2 is an appropriation for the purpose of paying for enhanced security to the town's computer network. Kathy Bellotta moves, and Brian Solacey seconds the motion to raise and appropriate $30,000 in fiscal year '24 for the purpose of paying for enhanced security to the town's computer network. Remarks, Ms. Bellotta.
Thank you. We are one of seven communities in the North Shore Information Technology Collaborative. So that's a group of towns that bounded together to purchase cybersecurity and infrastructure support. Our IT infrastructure is supported by this group. Another town in that collaborative recently experienced a cybersecurity breach on their network, so we were advised by the collaborative to make some security enhancements to our network to prevent a similar breach. In addition, this article also provides funding for what's called a preventative penetration test that would proactively uncover other vulnerabilities we might not be aware of. We ask for your support in approving this $30,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellotta. Is there discussion? I don't see any hands. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, press 2. Abstaining, press 3. And the voting period is open. Voting is closed. The result is 359 in favor, 8 opposed, with 5 abstentions, and the motion prevails. Article 3 proposes an appropriation of $80,000 for the purpose of paying the town's share of an operational review of the school district. And John Round moves, and Becky Jake seconds the motion to raise and appropriate $80,000 in fiscal year 2024 for the purpose of paying the town's share of an operational review of the school district. Remarks, John Round.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening to you all again. The Manchester Essex Regional School District and the School Committee have had difficulty developing a budget for the '24-'25 school year that can satisfy the financial and programmatic constraints voiced by the two towns. At a meeting several weeks ago, the School Committee and the Select Boards and Finance Committees of Essex and Manchester decided that it would be beneficial to hire a third party to conduct a review of the district's operations in the hope of finding, as yet unidentified, deficiencies and/or ideas that can help to close the million-dollar-plus budget gap. The review anticipates finding what is most and least valued in the district programs through surveys and/or forums of stakeholders, providing an assessment of the district's structure and management compared to best and/or common practice, and to producing a list of opportunities and considerations that could help with that budget gap. The anticipated cost of the review is $75,000 to $100,000, to be shared between the two towns. Manchester would be responsible for about two-thirds, based on the apportionment formula in the regional agreement. The review will hopefully start by the end of the calendar year, and a report would be received a couple of months or so later in time to provide at least some input into the '24-'25 school budget. This article requests that you appropriate $80,000 to cover Manchester's share of this cost. We recommend your approval of Article 3.
Thank you, Mr. Round. Is there discussion? Oh, excuse me. I recognize Sarah Melish, Chair of the Finance Committee. My apologies, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends appropriating $80,000 to hire a consultant to perform an operational review of the school district. Essex is also voting tonight on funding this effort. We are at a crossroads in the funding of the school district operating budget. Essex has indicated they cannot afford a fiscal year '25 increase of more than 2.5% without an override, which failed this year. But annual increases have been between 3% and 3.5% to maintain existing programs. Manchester has indicated a desire to maintain existing programs. Essex suggested this review in the joint meeting that John mentioned, which included School Committee, Finance Committees, and Select Boards of both towns. Essex wishes to move forward with this effort now. We hoped the School Committee would endorse this review, but they took no position at their last meeting. Most corporations periodically hire outside consultants to review their organization, obtain fresh ideas and suggestions on how to improve their operation. The corporation's leadership team determines whether to implement any of the recommendations. About 10 years ago, Hamilton Wenham underwent such a review. But Manchester Essex has not done one since we became a regional district 23 years ago. The consultant will review the school district operations for fresh ideas and may suggest different and perhaps more efficient ways of operating. But the School Committee will determine whether they wish to implement any of the recommendations. The review will also provide the towns additional information on potential annual increases that might be necessary to maintain the educational program. We entered into a regional school district agreement with Essex because neither town could afford to maintain a separate school system. That reality has not changed, and dissolving the district would cost us millions.
Sarah, excuse me, you've gone over two minutes. Could you wrap up later?
Yeah, I just have the thing on the tax rate. If, I thought I had three, I'm sorry. If Articles 2, 3, and 8 are approved, the total tax rate increase for the current fiscal year will be 2.45%. As always, the actual increase in your tax bill to be sent out on January 1st will vary depending on how the change in your assessment compares to the total change in the town's assessments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melish. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Would you go to a mic, please? There's one behind you there. Oh, we'll get a mic to you then. Could one of the tellers bring a mic? Thank you, Diane. The mic isn't working. Bob, can we have the mic, please?
Test, 1, 2. Matthew Combs, Windermere Park, 3 Windermere Park Extension. I just want to know, have they, two things. Number one, what the, if we're saving money on the town, have they done anything yet on hiring the consultant? Have they done any reviews to know how much the consultant will be? You know, have they done any estimates or anything, or gotten any estimates for that? And how much all of this is, you know, gonna, basically, I see the $80,000, but what is the $80,000 exactly going to? What exactly?
Mr. Round? Would you stand, please? Thanks.
Yeah. From what I understand, with the various School Committee meetings, they are looking over a number of consultants. There are several consultants that Massachusetts Department of Education recommends, and they're looking at that. And what was the second part of your question?
Just, you know, what exactly was the?
Okay.
So they haven't done any estimates yet?
We have the estimates of $75,000 to $100,000. We know that that's an approximate, that's an approximation.
Exactly, we're getting $75,000.
Yeah. It was the three issues that I had mentioned when I had spoken. There will be some surveys and forums to find out key stakeholders, what their opinions are, and that may include some of you out here. And then they will look at the operations to see if there are efficiencies that can be gained, and provide recommendations. Those are the three. They're fairly broad recommendations, but you, you know, you have to look to see what the specifics are once you get into the facts.
Would you go to a mic, or wait for a mic, so we can hear you?
Sorry, if you can wait.
So, no one? Just, okay, test, 1, 2. 1, 2. Test. 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 So, no one in the School Board is qualified to do any of the reviews on that stuff?
Well, we're looking outside of the School Board.
Let's remember to address your remarks to me.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm asking a question.
You're not cross-examining.
Okay, okay. I just was trying to find out what the $80,000 was going to. So it's just for the consultant, is that correct?
Yes, and we're not necessarily spending all of that. There still needs to be a little more due diligence to decide what the numbers are.
Thank you for answering that. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Further discussion? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, Lindsay Banks, 40 Forest Street. I just want to make a comment that the operational purview is, operational review is in the purview of the School Committee, not the town. Yet, the School Committee only found out when the town of Essex approached Manchester, found out that the town of Essex approached Manchester on October 31, that when they had actually begun a conversation about the idea in good faith. Thankfully, if a Select Board member had come to their meeting to fill them in, that it was happening. They only found out it would be on the warrant six days ago on November 7th, hence their official position. They just didn't have the time to fully talk about it. If you were at the meeting, you would have seen that go down. We need to be standing up for education in Manchester, even as a few Essex town leaders are casting doubt on the excellent leadership of our district as a cost-saving measure. Their budget may be tight, but there are more productive and collaborative ways to go about solving the problem. This audit is not it. The draft statement of work suggested the audit look at enrollment, enrollment trends, course offerings, section structures, staffing, and class sizes. This review is about finding more cuts. In the last five years, the district has made cuts and dipped into reserves to meet Essex's budget constraints. We've lost 15.85 positions, mainly through attrition in the past five years. At Memorial, specifically, we've seen class sizes go up, especially this year, and program offerings go down in the past few years. We can't continue down this path. Hamilton Wenham did do a review, and they did decide not to make the cuts that were suggested in the review. It was not worth the money in the end. School Committee is already looking at our district review from the state that would be free to taxpayers. No, when the Essex FinCom Finance Committee presented to the School Committee, he did say specifically that they had not found a consultant yet. Let's let the School Committee do their job, and it's appropriate to leave decisions about audits, operational reviews, budget cuts, and the school budget to them. We don't need to waste our precious, limited resources on an audit. Save it for our children's education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks. Further discussion? I don't see any hands. Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, press 1. Opposed, 2. Abstain, press 3. And the voting period is open. And the motion does not prevail. The vote is 118 in favor. The vote is 118 in favor, 237 against, with 13 abstentions. Article 4 is a proposal to amend the zoning bylaw by amending the Table of Uses, Section 4.2, Item E7, and Note 13. And Sarah Creighton moves, and Ron Master Giacomo seconds, the motion to amend the town zoning bylaw, Section 4.2, Table of Uses, as presented in the handout provided at the special town meeting. And this is in the handout that you should have received when you came in. I hope everybody has it. It's the white, it's the white handout. And Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5, provides that no vote on a proposed zoning amendment shall be taken until a report with recommendations by the planning board has been submitted to town meeting. The planning board has submitted its report and recommends approval. Also pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5, this is a 2/3s vote. Remarks, Sarah Creighton?
Good evening. You may have received a postcard from an anonymous group, and there's a handout tonight also from an anonymous source. And unfortunately, that mailing and the handout have significant inaccurate information about this article.
Excuse me, Sarah. Just one, I should say that Ms. Creighton has asked for, and I've agreed that she can speak for more than two minutes on this.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is about modifying an existing accessory use that's described in the table in Section 4.2, which is at the back of the warrant. So you can find the, the actual zoning, and there are two changes in red that you can see there. So I'm glad that you have come to town meeting to see and learn the facts here and to ask questions, and I encourage you to listen carefully as I explain this. So today, our zoning, existing zoning, allows an employee to live in an existing garage or carriage house, and this is allowed by special permit, not by right. Table 4.2, that's shown in the white handout, designates that special permit review by the term, by the letter ZBA, indicating that the zoning board of appeals sees that special permit. But however, today, live-in employees are not as common as they were 40 years ago when this bylaw, portion of the bylaw was enacted. And the zoning board of appeals sees applicants call a family member an employee in order to provide housing for that family member and to comply with this narrow and outdated rule. So we thought about adding family member to the bylaw, but town council advised us that it is problematic to restrict who can reside in a unit. And using the same logic, our existing language is probably also problematic. So we are, our goal for four years has been to clean things up, and our goal here is simply to make the bylaw fair and to tighten it to prohibit short-term rentals, which is what people don't want to see. We propose three simple changes. First, add a requirement that owners reside on the property. And the goal here is to prevent landlord investors from using this provision. Second, add a clause to prohibit short-term rentals less than 31 days, which are referenced in that state statute. And third, delete employee. This allows property owners the same rights as those who happen to have live-in employees. This might allow you to meet your family's needs, perhaps to house an elderly relative or to have a rental for additional income. Lastly, the special permit review that we have today remains. A special permit assesses criteria that include parking, drainage, and other impacts. It also allows abutters to have input. As I said, the handout shows the changes in red to the language in the Table of Uses and the note that accompanies that accessory use. The planning board urges you to vote yes on Article 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. And I recognize Sarah Melish as chair of the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The zoning board of appeals recommended this zoning change to the planning board. We have two sections in our bylaw which allow accessory dwelling units. Both require a special permit from the ZBA. One is Section 9, which allows an ADU, an existing structure of an owner-occupied structure, on properties that have twice the lot sizes required in the zoning district. We have had only one application under this section since 2018, and it was for a couple and a sister purchasing the property jointly. The other ADU, which this article is trying to modify, is in the Section 4 Use Table. As Sarah said, it allows a property owner who resides on the property to apply for a special permit to create an ADU for an employee. We've had fewer than 10 applications under this section since 2018. We have seen an increase in applications where a surviving parent no longer wishes to remain in their home, they wish to sell and invest in a child's home to create an ADU in an accessory structure. They want their independence, and they want to be close, but not too close. We cannot approve these requests unless the parent is going to be an employee, which is unlikely. We also feel that some of the ADUs historically created for employees are now market rentals. It makes no sense to us that one can create an ADU in an accessory structure for an employee, but not a parent, or that one can create an ADU for a parent within an existing structure, but not in an accessory structure to provide them more privacy. Thus, we ask for the change in the bylaw. We had asked just have relatives included, but because of the fair housing law, it had to remove all restrictions. We feel those restrictions of owner-occupied and not allowing short-term rentals are sufficient along with the opportunity for the ZBA to do a site visit, to understand the proximity of neighbors, allow neighbors to provide input, include conditions in the special permit to protect neighbors, and to deny the special permit if it is more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood. The ZBA will be diligent in protecting the abutters and the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melish. I'm going to pause the discussion of this motion for a moment because on the last vote we took, the total number of votes recorded was 368, and at that point, we had 425 voters checked in. That's 86%. That's a, makes me a little uncomfortable that perhaps some of the clickers weren't counted. So I'm going to ask, we're going to go back and vote once again on Mr. Belichick. Yeah, it may be that the problem is people way in the back of the hall, so if you would, perhaps come forward and take a seat closer in. That, that device on the tripod there, the white device on that tripod, is what's receiving votes from those who were further away, and it's possible that it's not receiving people who were way in the back, although we did test that to make sure it did. Okay, we'll do this again. Should Bill Belichick retire at the end of this season? And I would ask that everyone vote. I don't care how you vote, but please press one button. 431. All right. So that recorded. That recorded. So we had, that was 84% of the voters checked in. Did anyone not press a button? Just raise your hand. Mr. Bodmer Turner?
I pressed the button several times, but no registration of votes going in.
Okay, so.
The last three seconds.
All right, so obviously, some, some clickers aren't being counted. If you, if you pressed and it was received, you should have, you should receive back a showing in the screen that says your vote was received, 1A, 2A, or 3, 1A, 2B, or 3B. All right, so if, I would ask that anybody who is having that problem, go back to the check-in station and get another, and we'll take a brief recess for five minutes while you do that. I want to, I don't want to have us go through the meeting not counting every vote. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. Hi. How are you, Laura? Okay, so you were sitting in the back?
Yeah, it's the white device, but it's a part of the far back section.
I think an issue might be that people are trying to vote before the end is open, and you can't like, you're almost like, times you have. So maybe if you ask for a wave, it's like, it's like.
Okay. Okay.
For it to register.
I don't know, I.
It's, it's, I think it's less about the system and more about something with the reception in here, so.
Okay, okay.
Wait till he says, right. So maybe I don't say, I don't open it, I don't open the slide until you say.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems crazy, but I don't know.
Does it help if people hold it up over their hand?
Putting it up in the air?
Yeah, and you put it towards the.
The receiver?
Yeah. I don't think that's an issue.
It shouldn't be, we didn't have a problem in there before.
I think it has to do with people voting too quickly. Too quickly, yeah, yeah. Voting before it's actually open. Yeah, before it's open, yeah. They need to wait to see the 15 seconds.
I mean, it's picking up the majority, so I don't know why you, right, like minus 70 out of 40, you know, or not.
Yeah, but perhaps if you can say, or don't vote until I say it's open.
Right.
Right.
My question is, I'm wondering if that booster is working the way it should.
Diane, check the lights, are they on?
She went to go check it.
Yeah. Shit.
I guess I can go, oh, here she comes.
People are just asking that, just be identified who, who created this. Well, I don't know. It was, it was the proponents of. Yeah, so just say the proponents. I did. I said the petitioners.
So some people thinking that it's, they're, they're looking before it opens.
Yeah, I've heard that, too.
I don't know, but it doesn't, it shouldn't be a problem. I feel like we've never had that problem, but.
We had, we had that this afternoon. We had.
You know, hot mic.
What live mic? Go back to the yellow cards.
Okay, hold on one second. Let me reset it, okay?
Also, ask them to do it up in the air. I mean, that helped a little bit, we pulled too far.
Oh, yeah, maybe try, try, everybody raise it in the air, I don't know, hold on. Or in the back.
The meeting will return to order. All right. Has everyone who had a problem with the clicker got a new one? I assume they do. So it may be that people are perhaps clicking a little bit too soon before the voting period is actually open and the, and the receivers are able to receive, so don't, don't press too fast, and don't press before I say the voting period is open. I want to try one more test vote, so we'll go back to pumpkin pie. Okay.
Tell me when you want me to put it up.
Okay, open?
Open, now, now it's open.
No, it's not.
And I'm starting the timer.
Okay, the voting period is open. Wait a couple of seconds, and then press the keypad. All right, that's 414. We have 431 people checked in. I think that's good enough to go ahead.
Give me one second to move.
Yeah. Thank you all for your patience. I'm sorry about that. It's a mystery. So I'm going to, since we've suffered that interruption, since Ms. Creighton explained the motion under Article 4, I'm going to allow her to repeat that very briefly so we're all back on the same page again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, we are proposing a three-part change. Add a requirement that owners reside on the property. Add a clause to prohibit short-term rentals, and delete employee, allow the property owners the same rights as those who happen to have live-in employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Is there discussion? Yes.
Yes, Karen Bennett, 28 Lincoln Street. I have a question. Ms. Creighton said that the information that was, was received by the anonymous groups was inaccurate. Could she please tell us what was inaccurate?
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Ms. Creighton? Ms. Creighton?
The...I was referring to a postcard that said, "Risks the historic character of our town. That is subject to interpretation, and carriage houses are part of the historic character of the town, and employee housing in those, and housing in those accessory buildings is consistent with many structures in town." Secondly, parking needs without parking spaces, parking is part of the special permit review. There's also a provision here that says limited age criteria of accessory buildings. The current bylaws, you can see in the white handout, does not have an age criteria. It simply says existing garages and carriage houses. So on those three points, that's inaccurate. And then I believe that the pink handout has, confuses this provision of Section Four with the much more complicated ADU section in nine point one. And I'm not going to walk you through the two pages of that, but it's confusing two different sections of the bylaw. We're talking only about this table of uses that you see in the white pages at the back of the warrant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. What I'd like to say is that the ADU is in the table, and the ADU refers to another section that gives restrictions. This is ultimately an ADU that is in a detached building versus an attached building, yet it has no restrictions whatsoever. Those restrictions go through lot size, it goes through parking, it goes through a lot of other mandates that we should have for an ADU. This has none, and it has no protections. It does not say carriage house. It says any other, it could be a garage or anything like that. So, again, Section four point two, Item E six, an accessory dwelling unit, refers to Note six, which gives nine point one all of these restrictions. This has no mention of a note, and it goes through none of the details. Other towns have these kinds of ADUs. They restrict them to only one on the property. They restrict them to a particular size. They mandate what sewer needs to be there, what water needs to be there, access capabilities for people to get in. And so I highly recommend that we do not approve this unless there is these kinds of restrictions. Go back to the table and put these restrictions in. Minimally add nine point one to this bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Further discussion? Yes, sir? No, I recognize this gentleman. Oh. Thank you. Mary Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, fellow residents. A little background, I have been on the planning board for six-plus years and have gone through all of the zoning discussions. We had a recent request from the ZBA chair to alter this bylaw that allows detached accessory structures to be used as a dwelling unit for employee...
Excuse me, Ms. Foley. We realize you've been a member of the planning board for six years, but are you speaking tonight as an individual citizen?
I was told that I could only speak as a citizen and not a planning board member, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we were, got this request from the ZBA chair to alter the bylaw that currently allows a detached accessory structure to be used as a dwelling unit for employee by adding family member as an allowed use. These units are not intended to be marketed for rent, but rather to fill a need for residents and the community. The planning board opted to remove employee, not add family member, and instead, the proposal tonight is to allow detached accessory structure to become an accessory dwelling unit that can be rented for periods of seven nights or more. Our short-term bylaw only stipulates that short-term is six nights or less. Other towns have ADU bylaws that address the community need of family or relative or healthcare provider housing. Danvers has an extended family living area bylaw. Hamilton has one for family member or healthcare provider. Beverly has one for relative in a family home. Andover for family dwelling unit. Rockland has one for relative, just as an example. I propose Article Four gets voted down, and we go back and draft a more comprehensive detached ADU bylaw that defines maximum unit size, number of bedrooms, setbacks, off-street parking, longer occupancy term, that the ADU cannot be sold separately, et cetera, much like our current attached ADU bylaw does. This will ensure that these ADUs fit into the fabric of our neighborhoods and preserve our historic character while providing alternative housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Ms. Bennett?
Karen Bennett, twenty-eight Lincoln Street. I'd like to understand the number of special permits that have been submitted to the ZBA, and how many have been rejected in the last six years?
Ms. Melish, can you answer that?
There have been less than ten submitted. None have been denied, but some have been withdrawn without prejudice. Whenever we do our decisions and it seems clear that we're not going to approve a special permit, the applicant normally withdraws it without prejudice, so they have the opportunity of coming back within two years.
Can I also speak to the setback?
Yes, you may.
I want to make clear that in the zoning bylaw, an accessory structure is subject to setbacks. If it's in the setback, the ZBA takes that into consideration and looks at how close the neighbors are to determine whether it makes sense to allow an ADU. There also are lot size requirements. All of the setbacks and requirements in the bylaws apply to an accessory structure and would be taken into consideration before any ADU is approved. So to say there's no setback requirement, that's inaccurate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melish. Further discussion? Ms. Creighton?
I simply want to correct the short-term rental provision. We reference both the local general bylaw, which is six days, and the mass general bylaw. And the mass general bylaw has a more strict determination. It requires, it defines short-term rentals as accommodations reserved in advance for occupancy of not more than thirty-one consecutive days, or more than, that would be a short-term rental, not more than thirty-one consecutive days. So we reference the state statute, which is more strict, actually, in terms of duration.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Ms. Rogers?
Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. I'd like to say that the notation that was added to the existing accessory dwelling units that are on attached buildings also indicates that the applicant for special permit must submit certain plans, which this would not address. It also says when it can be occupied. It doesn't say how long that building or structure has been in existence, and to my understanding, a garage or something like that has a different setback than an actual home would, where people would live, that has a little bit less of a setback. So stating that we have existing setbacks can be very confusing to people, and we need to articulate exactly what those setbacks should be for these kinds of units. Every other town does this. Let's just go and do this right, so there's no confusion, and we arm the zoning board with what they need to, in case they need to deny something, that they have the laws to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Further discussion? Meeting ready to vote? Oh, sorry. Ms. Delicio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christina Delicio, six Lincoln Ave. I also have been a longstanding member of the planning board, speaking on behalf this evening. So one of the comments was made tonight was that, and I would like to reiterate why this change was brought to the planning board, was exactly why Ms. Melish stated, was to incorporate family members into accessory dwelling units. When this was brought up, town council did give us an opinion, and the opinion was, this may run afoul of fair housing. "May" is the operative word here. And the intent was, if you're having an employee or a family member, you're not necessarily going to rent this. So unless you are going to rent to your employee, which in my opinion would be a perk if you're providing them housing, or family members, as Sarah mentioned, they're going to contribute to the overall expense of the home. This isn't going to be a rental unit. This is going to be a unit that's used for employees and family members. Therefore, if it's not being rented, it would not run afoul from the fair housing. Additionally, there is a Supreme Court, which reinstates, in addition to the surrounding communities of Hamilton, Danvers, Beverly, and Andover, all which have the use, the word "family" in their bylaw. So I would beg to differ that the use of the word "family," and this is why the change came about, to insert "family," does not run afoul of any legal obligations that this town would have. So therefore, I would like us to go back to the original reason why we were approached with this, vote no on this, and get the wording accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delicio. Further discussion? Mr. Keith?
Hi, John Keith, eight Victoria Road. I have one question. At some point, it was kicked around, and it's always the case with these hurried-up things, but at one point, we had to have twice the lot size, and is that still going to be in play or not? Because what's provided doesn't make that clear. So that's a question. And I would also make an assertion, since it's only for existing building, that this is really biased towards people who have an existing building. It can unfairly enrich those who do, and actually, if I can't build one on my house, my lot, my neighbor might have one, so I'm going to bear the brunt of the problem, but not have equal opportunity to create such a structure on my property. So just maybe that's the question, too, is this clarifies just for existing buildings, so the rest of us who don't have one can't do this?
Ms. Creighton?
This accessory use is specifically for existing buildings. That's the first question. And the other question was about the double lot size. That's the other ADU, nine point one, so this doesn't address that one way or the other.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. Yes, sir? Mr. Bodmer Turner?
Paul Ford.
Well, you need to go to the mic, I'm afraid. And give us your name and address. Jeff Bodmer Turner, eighty-nine School Street. I'd like to call the question. Thank you. Is that seconded?
It's seconded.
It's seconded. That's the motion to cut off debate? It's a two-thirds vote? Take, give us a moment while we get a slide for moving the question. We have one ready. Tiffany just has to move it into the right place. Yeah. Okay. If you're in favor of ending debate, please press one. If you're opposed, press two, and if you abstain, press three, and the voting period is open. Well, the vote is two hundred and eighty-seven in favor, fifty-six opposed, and four abstaining. But I hear a lot of people saying they're not working, so we'll vote, let's do this by a show of hands. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it, and if you're opposed, please raise the card. I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than two-thirds, so we'll now vote on the motion under Article Four. And we're going to try this with the clickers.
And tell me once I go to the open.
Go to four. Yeah. Okay, so now we're going to vote on Article Four. Give it a second after the voting period opens, and then press. Voting period is open now. If you're in favor of the motion to amend the zoning bylaw, press one. Opposed, two. Abstaining, three. Let's try this with the cards. If you're in favor of the amendment, please hold up the card with your right hand, and if you're opposed. That's too close for me to call, so we'll have to ask the tellers to come forward. Thank you, Diane. Alright. If you're in favor of the amendment, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, can we stop? Everybody has to have a seat. We can't count the pitches. They need to move into a seat.
Alright, the town clerk is asking those who are seated on the side to move into a seat to facilitate the teller's counting. So please, everyone move into a seat.
Come up with the same number, right?
Yes.
Same number twice.
Yes. Well, you each count... You should each count at once.
Are we really ready, Mr. Moderator?
Okay. One last time, I hope. If you're in favor of the amendment, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it. And keep it up until you're sure you've been counted. To make sure we got an accurate count, we have two tellers counting each section.
I'm going to ask people to hold their hands up, and we'll go to cards if we need to.
It has to be a reception issue. It has to be a reception issue.
It's really weird.
April and June and not today.
We didn't have as many people.
Yeah, it gets too many clickers, too many...
I don't know. I don't know.
Diane said the light was on. I mean, whether that's working.
Yeah.
I mean, I wonder if it's, I don't know, up high enough in the air?
I'm going to try that.
Yeah. I wonder if I should move my laptop over. This thing is the magic.
Worth a try. Sure. Get all the rest of that crap out of the way, so it's not obstructing. Hmm? Sorry?
If you're opposed to this amendment, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it. How many in favor?
Would you add them up with your calculator?
The nose. Did I add them up? Really, would I add them up?
I just think we should add them under calculator.
She did.
With the calculator?
Yeah. She did my calculator.
Okay.
235, yes. 162, no. That's 397.
Pardon?
That equals 397.
Okay. 287?
Yeah.
No. 235 and 162?
Yes, 162.
Okay. How many people checked in?
The vote is 235, yes, 162, no. The total number of voters we received was 397, and that's 59% voted yes, so that does not meet two-thirds, and the motion does not prevail. Okay. Article 5. This is an appropriation of $916 to... Ms. Delicio, you have a point of order?
I do have a point of order, and I'm not sure if this is the time, but please feel to correct me. I would like to make a motion to reconsider question number 3, based on the fact that there was an 80-vote difference. Is that proper, Mr. Moderator?
Well, it is. Is that seconded?
I get it.
It requires a two-thirds vote to reconsider, under our bylaws. If you're in favor of that, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it. Ms. Delicio has moved to reconsider Article 3, and that was seconded. That was the appropriation for the school operational review. If you're in favor of reconsidering, this is a two-thirds vote, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it. And if you're opposed, please raise your hand with the card in it. I have no doubt the motion does not prevail by two-thirds. Under our bylaw, a motion can only be reconsidered once, so we're not going back to Article 3 again. Now, Article 5. As I said, this is an appropriation to pay prior fiscal year's expenses, and this requires a 9/10 vote under Chapter 44, Section 64 of the general laws. And Ann Harrison moves, and Becky Jakes seconds the motion to raise and appropriate $916 to pay for prior fiscal year expenses. Remarks, Ann Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow citizens. The article is unusual, as Mr. Wilson has said, because it requires a 90% supermajority, but second, because it does not name the person or organization to whom the money is owed. The reason is that the article reimburses residents who were issued parking tickets in error. The instructions on the resident stickers contradicted Article 14 of the general bylaws. There's a good reason for putting the stickers on the windshield rather than the rear driver's side window. The sticker is very hard to read if the car window is heavily tinted, and modern cars tend to have heavily tinted rear windows. At the same time, issuing tickets to residents for following the directions in a bylaw rather than the instructions that came with the sticker is not reasonable either. So it is the select... opinion of the select board that we should reimburse those people who got tickets for having their sticker in the wrong place.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is there discussion? All right. As you can see from the vote we just took on Article 4, if we have to go to counted hand votes, it takes a very long time. So I'm going to give us one last shot at using the clickers. Just once, only once. And I'm going to suggest that everybody, in addition to delaying after the start of the voting period, you also hold the clicker up in case that will get us a better signal. So... Meeting ready? Yeah, I'm ready. Okay. Voting period is open. Wait a few seconds. And now, try. And keep your fingers crossed. So, did anybody have a problem with the clicker, or did you get the right signal?
I am.
All right. It looks like we still are having trouble with the clickers. I don't think this vote was close enough that we need to worry about it. 350, yes, 29 opposed. So, and very few people raised their hands, or only a few. So that motion prevails by a vote of 350 to 29. But from here on, if I can't call it by a show of hands or by voice, we'll have to go to account with the tellers. Article 6 authorizes the purchase of a new sport utility vehicle for the fire department for a cost of $64,000. The select board will make its recommendation at the meeting, as will the finance committee. Becky Jakes moves, and Ann Harrison seconds the motion as presented in the article. Remarks, Becky Jakes.
Can you hear me?
Press the button.
Hello? Hello? Oh. Okay. This one's going in. How about this one? Okay, good. This is a request for a backup emergency response vehicle with ALS, advanced life support capabilities, and it would only need one person. The point of this is if we have our ladder out, or other vehicles from the fire department out, this only needs one person in the vehicle to respond to an emergency situation. This is not a transport vehicle, but it keeps us from having to send out more people, and enables the fire department to have one vehicle, one person, and not deplete staff needing... I think I lost my way on this. I'm going to sit down. So basically, what it means is that the fire department be able to have one vehicle and one person, as opposed to needing a ladder truck or another vehicle with two people. This is not asking for monies to be spent, because there is extra money in the ladder fund, which we'll be receiving this summer. Is that as clear as mine?
Thank you, Ms. Jakes. And I'll recognize Sarah Melish for the finance committee's recommendation.
The finance committee recommends spending $64,000 to purchase an SUV for the fire department, equipped to provide ALS services to back up ambulance 1 for a second concurrent call or additional personnel at a major incident. Currently, Engine 1 is equipped to provide this service. It does not make financial sense to use Engine 1 for this purpose for the following reasons. A pump truck is more expensive to replace, so we should limit the wear and tear. It is currently the only apparatus that can pump water, so it should be reserved for that need. And an SUV can more easily access narrow driveways than the larger Engine 1. Fire Chief McNeely provided us with a long-term replacement plan for all the fire apparatus, including the purchase of the SUV now. We support the plan and feel it is financially prudent to purchase the SUV now. It will not have an additional impact on the current year tax rate, since the town appropriated 1.5 million for a new ladder truck, which only cost us 1.4 million, and will be delivered next summer, so we can transfer the excess use to purchase the SUV. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melish. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. I so declare it. Article 7 is a reallocation of funds from two salary accounts to two professional services accounts. Kathy Bolata moves, and Becky Jakes seconds the motion as presented in the article. Remarks, Kathy Bolata.
This article does not ask for any additional funding. We're just asking to move funding from employee salary budgets to contracted services budgets. When the fiscal year 24 budget was approved last spring, we anticipated that employees would perform work that's now being performed by contractors. So we have to move the money from employee salary budgets to contracted services budgets. The $35,000 mentioned related to the Conservation Commission budget is to cover a new conservation agent that we share with the town of Hamilton. The $10,000 being moved in the planning department is to cover the contracted services we've engaged since our interim town planner left us earlier this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolata. And I recognize Sarah Melish for the finance committee. No? No. Okay. Fine. Is there discussion? Meeting ready to vote? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I have no doubt the motion prevails by a majority. Article 8 proposes to authorize the select board to enter into a lease agreement for up to 10 years with Harvest Point Associates for the use of the community center building, and to raise and appropriate $10,000 for the expenses related to that use. Brian Solace moves, and Ann Harrison seconds the motion to authorize the select board to enter into a lease agreement for 10 years with the option to renew with Harvest Point Associates for the use of the community center building for various community needs, and to raise and appropriate $10,000 for expenses related to the use of the building. And I'm going to allow discussion of Articles 8 and 11 together, because they're obviously Article 8 requires a two-thirds vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 14. Remarks, Brian Solace.
Good evening. On September 18th, Patrick Meehan, co-president of the Manchester Community Center, advised the select board of a private tenant landlord dispute between the community center and Harvest Point condominium association. The community center owns the building. However, the land below the building is wholly owned by the Harvest Point condominium association. As a charitable nonprofit, the landlord had been charging a nominal rent far below market rate. Over the past few years, the landlord has expressed their desire for the community center to increase the community programs and building usage in return for the subsidized rent. These discussions broke down, and on September 12th, the Harvest Point Association sent a termination letter to the MCC. The community center's occupancy ended yesterday, November 12th. They now have 10 days to advise the HPA of their intent to either move the building off association land, or turn ownership of the building over to the condominium association. Normally, a municipality would not be involved in such a dispute. However, the MCC has asked the town to intervene on their behalf. As a result, the town has negotiated a creative solution to address the community center's desire to keep their services and the condo associations... desire to keep their services and the condo association's desire to expand civic uses of the building. The plan would include public restrooms and welcoming center, a harbor master's office, and space for youth and senior programs, board and committee meetings, and other gatherings. This article is put before the town to authorize the select board to enter into a long-term lease between the town of Manchester and the condo association, and then sublet the land to the community center. There's more. Finally, the agreement will allow the community center to continue the mission with as little disruptive disruption as possible. We feel that this is the simplest, least expensive, most common sense approach that serves the best interest of all involved. Thank you.
Article Eight, Article Four, excuse me, Section Eight of the Town's general bylaw requires that any acquisition or conveyance of real estate be referred to the planning board and that the planning board make a report with recommendation to town meeting. And the planning board has made its report and recommends approval. I'll recognize Sarah Creighton for the planning board.
Mr. Moderator, are you taking comments on eleven as well or not right now?
Well, not right now.
Okay. As moderator said, the planning board is asked to weigh in on this. The planning board supports the continued operation of the community center and the select board's efforts to find common and mutually beneficial uses. The planning board voted four to two to support Article Eight. The lease provides the flexibility to develop and evolve a new and cooperative relationship that provides greater opportunities for all of Manchester residents.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. And I recognize Sarah Melish for the finance committee.
The finance committee recommends Article Eight to negotiate a lease for the community center property and appropriate ten thousand dollars for expenses. It is a cost-effective method to protect the community center, and we envision locating the harbor master's office on the second floor and providing much-needed public restrooms. This could save us around five hundred thousand dollars by not needing to build an office in Reed Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melish. And I recognize Patrick Meehan, the co-president of the Manchester Community Center.
Hello, Patrick Meehan, three eighty-four, co-president of the Manchester Community Center.
Could you give us your, I think they might cut out when you gave us your address.
Three eighty-four Summer Street.
Thank you.
I want to say, I want to thank everyone here for supporting the MCC. With your support and town support, we're in a much better position now than we were a month ago. There were a lot of dedicated people working and getting over four hundred and forty signatures and securing our support in town. Having two articles to save the MCC was confusing to some people, although they both had the same goal. So we want to be clear right now. Town has a verbal agreement with Harvest Point, and Article Eight gives them the authority to actually sign that, sign the lease. This gives us time right now so that we can together protect the MCC to the community's satisfaction and continue to have our groups meet uninterrupted, and our fitness, our education groups will continue their programs as well. Remember, we have Santa Claus coming to town by lobster boat on December second. We're very happy to be able to keep all these traditions alive, but we still need everyone's vote. So with that, the MCC will withdraw Article Eleven, and we encourage everyone to vote yes on Article Eight to save the MCC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meehan. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Shipman. Could you go to the mic, please?
I just have a quick question.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Bill Shipman, Overledge Road. A quick question. What is the financial implication to the town of the proposed lease agreement?
Mr. Fetterfield. This is town administrator Greg Fetterfield.
So the lease agreement would have similar terms to the existing agreement that MCC has had. And then with our sub-agreement with MCC, the bulk of those finances would be covered through that sub-lease agreement with MCC. So there will be some expense with the town because we're increasing the use of the building. So we would, we would contribute towards higher utility costs, et cetera. But that would, that would be the focus of the town exposure.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterfield.
So diminutous, town letter, diminutous expenses?
I'm sorry.
Diminutous expenses?
So we've asked for, for the remainder of this fiscal year to go through July, June thirtieth, of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Further discussion? I think you need to speak into the mic.
Hello.
That's good.
Sixty-seven A Lincoln Street, Michelle Brown. Quick question that we don't need to get into now, but is there going to be discussion regarding and decisions by the town regarding what type of community center it will become with the use of the public restrooms, the visitor's center, and things like that?
Mr. Fetterfield.
So yes, that'll be part of public discussions that the Board of Select, that the select board holds and that we would do in collaboration with MCC as well, and certainly would welcome community input on going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterfield. Yes, in the way back.
Hi, my name is Susan Halpern. I live at three Bell Court. I currently teach a Tai Chi class at the community center, and I'm curious about how the quiet that we need when we run a Tai Chi class is going to be influenced by people coming and going who need to use public bathrooms and people who are using the office.
Mr. Fetterfield.
So again, we don't have final plan, but the idea would be to provide some segregation of those uses. So there may be some modification to the existing building to allow those restrooms to be used without disturbing the, that bigger meeting space, so there'd be separate, separate uses allowed.
Because right now, the bathrooms are directly outside the rooms that we use for our groups.
Correct. So we may either have one bathroom that's for the public only and for general public and one bathroom dedicated to the users of the building, or we may add additional restrooms as well.
That's good to know. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, I think you had your hand up. Okay. Further discussion?
Sheila Hill, two Running Ridge Row. Just a quick observation. The handout reads, "Enter into a lease agreement for up to ten years." Our overhead requires a lease agreement for ten years. The "up to" gives one pause.
Well, the motion says ten and omit's "up to," and that, and the motion is what we vote on.
The screen. So the, the motion is not for up, the article says up to ten years.
And it's the motion that counts.
That counts. Thank you.
Further discussion? I don't see any hand, yeah, there's a hand. Mr. Gates.
Jim Gates, two Desmond Avenue. I have a question. If the building is going to be leased, then the building will have to be assessed by the town as a commercial enterprise. I don't believe there's a current assessment other than a general inclusion of the value of the acreage of the harborside condo association. And what will be the assessment and who will be paying it, which is not in the equation at the moment.
Mr. Fetterfield, can you answer that?
So currently, as a, as a, the building being held by nonprofit is not, not assessed. So if it reverts to a private owner, the condo association, then it will be assessed real estate. And so the condo association then would be paying real estate taxes on that. I don't have a value for you. That'll have to be determined through the, to the assessor's office once, once all of that, all of the dust settles here.
But let me see if my understanding is correct. If it were conveyed to the town, if this, if this motion were approved and leased to a nonprofit, the town would not be assessed, correct?
Correct. The, the, the ownership is with the private entity, and the private entity pays the real estate taxes. And then, and the town will not be paying, paying for those real estate taxes.
So the bottom line is if this is approved, nobody will pay, be paying taxes on it, correct?
The condo association could be paying taxes depending on how the assessors evaluate that arrangement.
Okay. Thank you. Is that, is that clear to everybody? Okay. Further discussion? Ms. Rogers.
Hi, I just have a question. Is the actual building changing ownership?
Mr. Fetterfield.
So under the current lease agreement that MCC has had with Harvest Point, if, if MCC does not relocate the building off of the premises, then the ownership does transfer to Harbor Point. So that is, that's the condition of the lease that the MCC signed with HPA.
Ms. Rogers.
After ten years, then they own the building versus the community's center owning the building or the town owning the building.
So it'll happen sooner than ten years. The HPA will become the owner unless MCC decides to relocate the building within, I think it's ninety days of, ninety days plus ten, ten, ninety days plus ten days of the termination of the lease. The terms of the lease that were negotiated with HPA would allow us to renew the lease after the ten years.
Thank you. Yes? Yes, sir.
Jim Brady, ten Lincoln Avenue. Just a clarification. It's a ground lease or is this an actual lease of a building? Because that's important to note, too. Is it a ground lease or a lease of the building?
It's a lease of the building.
So they could relocate us if they wanted to at any time. The community center could be relocated by the landlord. If you're just leasing the building, they could replicate it somewhere else and move it if they wanted to.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that because if you had a ground lease, it would actually be a lot more structurally better for the, the community center if you said it was a ground lease versus a lease of the actual building that they could relocate at any time somewhere else on the property if they chose to redevelop it. And then we would be out of the use of the community center for some period of time. It would be up to the landlords, and we wouldn't have control of that.
So I think that's something that we can talk about with HPA. We haven't gone into that kind of level of detail at this point. So it's a valid point to raise, and we'll, we'll pursue it.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, and thank you, Mr. Fetterfield.
Hi, I'm Jeanneke O'Shea. I live at sixty-three School Street. I think I'm wondering what guarantees are there that the community center will be, will continue to be used for the priorities that the community wants, that it will actually represent the wishes of the community? I mean, a lot of the people that I've spoken to lately, and we've had hundreds, hun, thank you, everybody, we've had hundreds of people come forward to strongly support the community center. People have birthday parties there. There's a guy who's had a family reunion for eighty people in there, you know, so much support for elderly people, for children, for families. It seems to me that there's some question as to how the use of the building is going to be divvied up in the future. And it seems to me that that should be decided by the community itself because that building is a gift to the community for almost fifty years now. So what protections does the community actually have that the building will be used in the ways that they want and that it can grow and expand and serve the community even better in the ways that the community itself actually would prefer?
Mr. Fetterfield.
So the intent, and the, the select board has approved a memorandum of understanding for MCC. The intent is to continue MCC's current utilization of the building. We appreciate all those uses that you just listed, and there are many more. So the, the full intent is to continue with those uses and then to expand into some additional uses. As, as has been mentioned, public restrooms, an office for the harbor master, be much closer to the public floats, and some additional meeting space and programming. So the, the full intent here is to continue the existing uses and to expand into some additional community uses to allow the community the full benefit of, of the building. I mean, your recourse is, is to, to lobby your board, your, your select board to, to make sure that that's the case. And I think that's the full intent. That's the intent of the MOU that was executed, or at least by the board. And the whole reason why they directed me to, to try to put together this, this proposal is so that it is a win-win for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterfield.
Gar Morris, eleven Jersey Lane. I'd like to move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Is that seconded? It's second. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, that's the motion to cut off debate, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it. It's a two-thirds vote. And if you're opposed to cutting off debate, please raise the card. I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than two-thirds. So we'll go to a vote on the motion, and I'm going to try, well, let's do that by a show of hands as well. If you're in favor of the motion to authorize the selectmen to enter into this lease, please raise your right hand with the red, yellow card in it. Thank you. And if you're opposed, I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than two-thirds. I just want to say that despite the electronic glitches with the voting system, we're ahead of where I thought we'd be. So I think if we keep going as expeditiously as we have been, there's a good chance we may finish in one night. I hope I didn't jinx this. Article Nine is a proposal to amend the Town's general bylaws. Article Fourteen, resident parking, by deleting the location resident vehicle stickers are placed, amending the process to obtain stickers, and other things. And Kathy Bellata moves and Brian Solace seconds the motion to amend Article Fourteen of the Town's general bylaws as presented in the handout provided at the special town meeting. So you should all refer to the handout for the details of this motion. Remarks, Kathy Bellata.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So at a high level, the changes in this article are designed to improve the efficiency of the processes related to parking and administrating, administering resident stickers. It does not change the list of streets where only resident parking is allowed. So basically, there are four changes, and you should have in the handout that you received the redlined version of, of the exact changes that are being proposed here. The, the first change in Section A one allows the select board to review the list of street designations at a public hearing. So it removes the list of streets in Section A, which is at the very end of that handout. But it, and those list of streets will be posted on a website. But it, and those list of streets will be posted on a website. So this basically allows the select board to hold a public hearing about any type of changes to the resident parking. We can do that at any time of the year. We don't have to wait for a town meeting discussion. So that's the first change. The second change, also in Section A1, clarifies what type of school events we allow non-resident parking on nearby streets. So when there's a specific school athletic event or special event, we do allow non-resident parking on certain streets. And this just really tries to clarify what those situations are. The third change is modifying Section A2 to explain the current procedure for resident sticker dispersion. So the old general bylaw talks about making a request to get a resident parking sticker. We get them automatically in the mail now. If you have a vehicle that is registered in Manchester, it's automatically sent to you as an example. So we're just trying to make the bylaw reflect what's actually happening. The fourth change modifies Section A2 to allow any household to receive a visitor placard, which may be used in resident parking lots, but not at any of our beach parking lots. So those are the four primary changes that are in the, proposed for the general bylaw, and the select board requests your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bellotta. Is there discussion? Ms. Delisio.
Christine Delisio, 6 Lincoln Ave. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So there's a lot packed into this one article bylaw change. And high level, it involves stickers and streets and, you know, residents' neighborhoods. So the concern that I have is that it was a bit arduous to ask for, you know, a resident-only street, and you needed to come and prove your case. This actually takes all that hard work and kind of puts it to the side. And what's good for the goose is also good for the gander. This is going to give it that opportunity also to become a non-resident street. So to the select board, I have three questions. One, based on the stickers. What financial analysis have you completed previously before, when two years ago, this was a revenue generating event, now it's an expense? That's my first question. Number two, how many applications within the last two years have been applied for, for resident streets? And number three, can you guarantee that all of Schedule A will be approved as it is written today? Thank you.
Ms. Bellotta? Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I'm going to give an attempt at some of these. I may ask for some help, but.
Would you stand, please?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Thank you.
On the first one, I'm going to defer to the select board who was here two years ago. I do not recall the change in the process as a revenue generator, because this, what we're talking about here are resident parking stickers, not beach stickers. And we've never charged for resident parking stickers, I don't believe. So I'm not understanding that particular question. The second, I'm sorry, the second question was around.
I'm back at the mic to clarify for you. How many applications have you received?
I'll have to defer to, I don't think we have that data here. And the third one was, would the select board commit to affirming the current list of resident parking streets as listed in Schedule A? Is that your third question?
Can you guarantee that the list today will be same?
We haven't deliberated specifically, but I don't, I have not, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't. We have not seen or talked about any changes at all to the resident parking list. We all in agreement on that? Yeah, we're all in agreement on that, so.
I think it's hard, right? So you haven't heard from the people, you haven't deliberated. I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. Through you.
No.
Yes.
I have a follow-up question then. Okay. So we went from resident stickers to handing out stickers for everyone. Everyone could receive a resident sticker for free. Now, everyone receives a beach sticker. So on top of... Huh? The stickers are free. The beach stickers. You have to pay for the walk-on passes.
Greg, could you take this one? I think there's no separate beach sticker anymore.
Correct. Exactly. You're correct. There's no confusion.
Excuse me, Delisio. Through me, yes?
I think we're just in agreement. Okay, yes.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So in terms of the costs, instead of getting your, a couple of beach tags with a beach sticker, we now charge directly for the beach tag. So it's, this has been revenue neutral. So it's the same amount of money that's being collected. Actually, it's probably a little more because of the increase of purchase of beach tags. But it has not, it's not been a negative from a revenue perspective. So the, so yes, the beach and parking stickers now are no cost, but you always have to buy your tags to get on the beach.
Ms. Delisio.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So I think we just went off topic a little bit there. So I'm a little bit concerned, living in a resident-only neighborhood, that the resident-only neighborhoods have not been considered. My, I expressed my concern before, that taking away is just as easy as granting a resident-only. In addition to that, the typing of, when the placards, in my understanding, were if you had visitors during the summer months, you would reach, you would request a placard, and you would put that on there for your street, for your visitors on your resident-only street. Now this actually takes this away, and it actually congests, it's just not visitors anymore, it's anyone. So I'm really not understanding, none of these topics were on any select board agenda since the last town meeting. So I'm wondering where this came about? And there was one select board meeting that said that they were going to discuss the fines of stickers, moving streets, removing streets, placards. This was not on an agenda at a select board meeting. So I feel like this is interrupting resident neighborhoods without actually the ability to discuss. Thank you.
Mr. Fetterfield, can you respond to that?
Well, so the board most certainly discussed this at a select board's meeting. They're required to before they put the warrant together. They reviewed this, these changes prior to approving the warrant. And there is no proposed change to how those placards are being administered. The clarification is where they're valid. There's no change in the issuance of the placards themselves in this article.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterfield. Further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Bowling.
So I'm in favor of these changes. This article's needed some cleanup for quite a while. And with respect to Section A, you probably do want to make a few changes there. There's, for example, Elm Street, east from the corner, to Paul Loren's driveway. That's a fragile specification. Same for Pine Street, except for the area six hundred feet on west side of Parker's Garage North. When the people wrote these things, they were a little, you know, lax, or not really thinking about the future. And then my last one was my favorite, Pulaski Drive, which is, says that there's resident parking, I think, west side only, for the entire length. Pulaski Drive is a U-shaped drive with entrances off of Pleasant Street, which one runs east-west. So depending on which side you go in, one side is west, and one side is east, and on the other side, one side's east, one side's west, you could do a nice little Gilbert and Sullivan ditty around this, I think. But in terms of actually administering it, I imagine it would be a little bit confusing. So I think it's a good thing that you're taking it out of the bylaws, so that you can clean it up and put something back up on the website that's a little bit more accurate and modern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling, for that welcome levity. Further discussion? Yes, sir. Wait, you need a mic. Can we turn the mic on, please?
Test. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Matthew Combs, 3 Windermere Park Extension. I have two questions, actually, in regards to this. Number one, as you know, like federal, any road that gets federal funds for repairs, or anything which a lot of our streets do, you know, here in the town of Manchester from the state, affected by federal funds, can't be restricted by anybody. Like a good example downtown, how does this proposal affect that, since we're getting federal funds to fix our roads and everything? We can't really restrict anyone from using them. And number two, a good example, I use the dump every week, and the passes have something to do with that as well. You know, like using the town dump, or using some of the services, even though I don't use the beach. How does the parking stickers affect that? You know, the resident stickers and everything? If we take the resident stickers, would be just if you have a orange bag, you can still use the dump, or, you know, one of the trash bags, if you buy the bags, you could still use the dump. So those are my questions.
Mr. Fetterfield.
Sure. So I wish we did get more federal funds, actually, in terms of being able to repair more of our roads. So the only non-town, the only state roads in town, basically, are 127 going through. But the section from Ashland to C Street, more or less, yeah, is controlled by the town on the, either side of those points. It is a state road, but we can't have parking on the street. But this bylaw doesn't change that, nor can we. So that's the only stretch of state road, basically. They also owned by the two interchanges on 128. And then your second question regarding the transfer station, your sticker is valid there? That's how you can get into the transfer station, with that sticker on your car? No, we're not doing away with the stickers. We're just changing the location of where you put them on your car.
So the question was, were we doing away with the stickers? And the answer is no. We're just changing the location where you put them on the car. And that's because, as I understand it, a lot of, a lot of recent cars have tinted windows so the old location makes the sticker invisible. Mr. Keith.
John Keith, 8 Victoria Road. I should know this, but I'd love to have this resident-only thing apply to Victoria Road, if there's anybody who can help make that happen. We're seeing a lot of folks now parking on our street, going to White Beach. And I feel bad, because I don't feel like, I don't want to be a NIMBY, but same token, we sometimes get three, or four, or five vehicles parking in front of our house. But that's a side story. Question I do, just as a matter of administratively, by limiting your vehicles to less than one ton, you're actually, you're actually precluding many of the pickup trucks that are in town. So I think that language should be revised. And I'm assuming garage, to me, is an archaic or a colloquial term for parking on your property, but many houses don't have a garage, so in theory, that's not applicable. But the one ton, many pickup trucks are greater than one ton. A lot of contractors will technically not be able to get a sticker under this, the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Further discussion? This is a majority vote to amend the general bylaw. If you're in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
I have no doubt the motion prevails by more than a majority. Article 10 is another amendment to the general bylaws. And Brian Solace moves, and Becky Jake seconds the motion to amend Section 30A of Article 10 of the town's general bylaw by adding the phrase, quote, "with the exception of two parking spaces just east of Tappan Street," unquote, to the listing of no parking on Beach Street east of Tappan. Remarks, Brian Solace.
Good evening. This is a function of actually public safety. We've been approached on a couple of different occasions with traffic, with pedestrian traffic crossing Beach Street at Harbor Point. Along that, coupled with the expanded use of Reed's Floats, there's a lot of traffic. So the desire here is to create a sidewalk for pedestrian, I mean, a crosswalk. A crosswalk. And, but the only place we can put that would be to eliminate a parking spot. And we know that the parking is valuable. We'll let DPW determine if we need to lose one or two parking spots, and that this is just to replace the lost parking. Yep. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Solace. Is there discussion? Yes.
My name is Ron Skates, 114 Boardman Avenue. I think that the crosswalk is an excellent idea, and I think something certainly should be done. But I'm somewhat put off by the extension of two parking spots. You said there might be one, or you might be two. As you recall, several years ago, where those spots are going to go were voted down. As someone who goes up that street quite regularly in the summer, it's an accident waiting to happen. Too often, you see young children jump out of their car because their parents aren't quite on top of them, they're excited about being at the beach. I personally think this is sort of cutting off our nose, a spite of our face, to have a reversed saying. I think that you're doing more harm by not leaving those two spaces. You're having cars come out, because they're turned there off of another street, and I just think it's too dangerous. I'm not against, and I think you should go the walkway, but I think you should give up the two parks. It's my understanding, and I would ask this for the town manager, is my understanding is several years ago, we had a study done by a reputable consulting company that showed that we have ample parking in the town. Is that correct, or am I incorrect in that?
Mr. Fetterfield.
So the parking studies, we've had a few, a couple that have been done. They do indicate that we have more of a parking management problem than a parking, parking spot problem, in terms of, we do seem to have an adequate number of parking, it's just the management of those parking spaces.
Well, it's the location of the parking is the issue. I understand that. But as a town as a whole, we have ample parking, and I don't think we should take the chance of some young person being killed needlessly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skates. Further discussion? I don't see any hands. Meeting ready to vote? This is a majority vote, again, to amend the general bylaw. If you're in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Well, I can't tell from that, so we'll go with the cards. If you're in favor of that, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it. Thank you. And if you're opposed, I have no doubt the motion prevails by a majority. Article 11 relates to the Manchester Community Center, and Patrick Meehan, the co-president of the Manchester Community Center, moves to pass over, take no action under Article 11. And Rachel Przyk, co-president of the community center, seconds the motion. Is there discussion? If you're in favor of passing over Article 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote, I so declare it. Article 12 is a proposal to amend the general bylaw of the Town of Manchester by the sea, and I'll recognize Morgan Evans for the main motion. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Morgan Evans of 20 Boardman Ave. Like many of you, I moved here decades ago for...
Excuse me, Mr. Evans, you need to state the motion first.
Who? Thank you. No amendment to the zoning bylaw shall be valid unless the motion calling for the amendment shall be adopted by a vote on a printed ballot at a town election after full opportunity to debate.
Is that seconded? It's seconded. Remarks, Mr. Evans.
Introducing myself again, Morgan Evans, 20 Boardman Ave. Like many of you, I moved here decades ago with my family, both for the schools and also for the historic character of the town and its open spaces. The purpose of this article, as you can see, is to ensure that the approved bylaw changes make sense to all... make sense to all of the residents and that the changes are fact. The most important line in that, in the motion, is after full opportunity for debate. That represents the town meeting we're having now, you can see it's taped. The final language, then, is posted under the intent of this motion. We get to think about it more, but more importantly, we get to enfranchise, that is, to increase the number of people who are voting on this. So we have a very good turnout here for a special town meeting, but you may know that roughly 10 times more people vote at the ballot, especially when there's a presidential election. We have between 1 and 3,000 typically, instead of 1 and 500, as we do tonight. So if you vote yes, you'll expand the representation of town residents on important matters. This applies to zoning. I'm asking you to apply to zoning what we already do for bonds. As you may know, after we vote for a bond of more than $1 million, we send it to ballot. For many of you, you may have the screen sheet that we provided. On the back is what is our Chapter 270 law, and I want to read part of that. In the underlying section, it says, "The ballot question, as such occurrence or as other action that is specified in the general bylaw, or that a town meeting has determined should be authorized pursuant to this act, is approved by a quantum of votes sufficient to authorize a town meeting." And with this language, I believe, and you'll hear otherwise, but it is just a belief in both parts, that this may have trouble getting past Attorney General. You'll see on the front, I ask you to vote yes. Again, the Attorney General may or may not decide against franchising more people to vote on zoning, but if we don't try, we won't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I'll recognize Ann Harrison for the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Select Board opposes this article. We think that matters that are of importance to the town should be discussed and debated by the town meeting so that everyone hears all sides. This meeting has been particularly good that way, I think. We also accept the advice of Town Council that this, that the Attorney General is unlikely to approve this, and try not to go against advice of Council. Mostly, I am concerned about the effect this changing the zoning determination to a ballot would have on the communications to the town. And specifically, there was a postcard sent to all town residents, and you've heard from Mrs. Creighton that there were elements of that that were not correct on one thing, there are elements that are not correct on others. This would, if we took the zoning bylaws to a ballot, we would end up with arguments by postcard, and I would much rather see zoning discussed by voters. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. And I'll recognize Ron Master Giacomo, the Chair of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone. The Planning Board does not endorse this article. Zoning changes are to be considered in an open forum at town meeting with the opportunity to openly discuss issues and ask questions, not a simply yes or no in the privacy of a ballot box. The history of town meetings is the history of liberty and free discussion in Massachusetts. We began holding town meetings over 350 years ago, shortly after the Puritans arrived from England seeking liberty. This is how our town conducts its business. This article would require that any zoning changes approved by town meeting be subject to a separate ballot vote again in the spring. The argument I heard at our last Planning Board meeting was that this would allow voters not able to make town meeting to have a chance to indicate their preference on past zoning articles. It sounds reasonable on its face, but it feels, it appears the real purpose of this proposal would make it even more difficult to approve zoning changes. Otherwise, why is it being limited to only past zoning articles? Why doesn't this proposal apply for failed zoning articles as well? Why are we stopping on only past zoning articles? Why not revoke the school and town budgets at ballot? The town meeting forum allows for debate and reshaping of our any-town bylaw and budget, including zoning bylaws, in a democratic way. At town meeting, you can hear debate and understand the facts in a way that, for instance, a mailing cannot. A mailing can distort the facts to sway your vote to an agenda that may or may not have the best interest for Manchester. We need to constantly adjust our zoning bylaws to meet the needs of the town by open discussions at meetings like this one. Don't dilute the town meeting process. The Planning Board urges you to vote no on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Master Giacomo. The Town Council, as you've heard, has advised the town that this motion is illegal under decisions of the State Supreme Judicial Court, and will likely be rejected for that reason by the Attorney General, whose approval is required for any bylaw amendment to become effective. And I'm going to recognize Town Council, Robin Stein of KP Law, to explain the basis for that opinion.
Good evening, Robin Stein from KP Law, we're your Town Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. And as you heard, we have advised the town that we do not anticipate the Attorney General would approve this bylaw change. The Attorney General will not approve a bylaw change that is inconsistent with state law or otherwise unconstitutional. There's at least one case on point that we rely on for our opinion. It's called Kubik v. City of Chickopee. It's a 1968 case. And in that case, the Supreme Judicial Court talked about General Law, Chapter 40A, being a statute of general application throughout the Commonwealth, and its requirements for the adoption of zoning ordinances cannot be varied by a particular municipality. It's our feeling that 40A, in particular, General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, sets out a comprehensive statutory scheme for how towns adopt their zoning bylaws, and that this particular article would be inconsistent with that. So our expectation is this would not be approved by the Attorney General.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Is there discussion? Mr. Gilbert. Is that mic live, Bob? Mr. Gilbert, the mic is coming.
You can see Mr. Gilbert in the back. One more time?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you, Alvin, for all the work you're doing for the town. There's an echo.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you all. That's just made my night.
Yeah, we'll have to send a letter to Belichick. Everyone in this room is aware of how long and how hard it has been to get our zoning bylaws revised and updated, and we're still not done with a number of needed and beneficial changes that we worked on starting about four years ago. The state set up the way we do zoning in town with its Zoning Enabling Act, and as Town Council said, we have been following it to the letter of the law. We work hard on zoning laws and discuss them publicly at many forums and venues, more than the law requires, and there's plenty of public debate, as well as at town meeting. And then we vote on them here. That should be enough. This article wants to add another layer of bureaucracy to governance in a very small town when it is hard enough to get anything done as it is. This wants to make it even harder. If someone says not everyone can make it to town meeting, then why not require that all issues get voted on at the ballots and none at town meeting? This makes no sense. It's also illegal to do this, and no other town in the state of Massachusetts requires a second ballot vote for zoning initiatives. We have not made enough effective and wise zoning changes to encourage the kinds of growth we want to see in our town, and this measure clearly gets in the way of that. We need a limber and responsive town government that can take proactive action to our betterment and make plans before changes are thrown upon us. We should not handicap our town governance by this rather, in my opinion, bizarre and illegal proposal. Please vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Mr. Keough. I should say that Mr. Keough asked for a little more than two minutes, and I've agreed to let him have it.
I originally asked for seven hours, but I wouldn't have go with that. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the town meeting, I'm Tom Keough from 20 Lincoln Street. I've been attending town meetings for over 50 years. This is one of the first articles I can ever remember that works to disenfranchise the voters who attend special or annual town meetings. I rise to speak on Article 12 on tonight's warrant as an individual who believes that the town meeting is the governing body of our town, and it is. In our open town meeting format, one can do many things to become an informed voter. It is my belief that in a democracy, the informed electorate are the individuals or groups of people best equipped to make a decision that is in the best interest of the many. How does one become a part of this informed electorate? One can get a copy of the town meeting warrant, read it over, check out, research the articles that you wish to discuss, and come up with an opinion on the articles. One can go to meetings or public hearings, in person or virtually, to listen to and be involved in the discussion on these articles. One can talk to elected or appointed members of the specific boards or committees to hear from them about their thinking on specific articles on the warrant. But most of all, you should attend the town meeting where these articles are being discussed, listen to the discussion, ask questions of the speakers, and take away the information allowing you later in the evening to use your power as a voter in the decision-making process. In my opinion, going to the town meeting is one of the most important duties you have as a citizen. Democracy is not a spectator sport. You need to be involved in the process. In my opinion, if this article were to pass, you would have many people who know little or nothing about a specific zoning article being part of the decision-making process. Not being informed about a zoning article to be voted on at the election, you will need to get your information formed by letters to the editor, receiving information telling you how to vote on specific articles in the mail, or information that you read on the Internet. Of course, we know that if it's on the Internet, it must be correct. Congratulations. You are here at the town meeting as thousands have attended town meetings before you. The knowledge and discussion from residents who attend the town meetings have reinforced many residents' thinkings, as well as changing some votes over the years. Attend the town meeting process, listen to the opinions, and vote on the warrant articles. I would strongly ask people to vote no on this article. It does not ask people to work to become an informed voter. Attend town meetings, find out all sides of the topic before you make a decision, and I may have to change this last line, I was going to say, and push the button on your clicker, but in this case, it's to wave your yellow card and have your vote recorded. A no vote on this article is for more knowledgeable and more informed voters making the decisions for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. Yes, ma'am.
Is this, oh, yes, it is working. My name is Alexandra Garcia Mata, and I'm at 70 Lincoln Street. I support everything that Mr. Keough just said, and I just wanted to add that we here have a very precious form of true democracy, and if we don't have to come to town meeting to vote on important issues, we no longer have a town meeting form of government, really, and we might as well just have a mayor and a council and all that other thing. But we have a very special and unusual form of government that is precious to us. It's a precious heritage from our very earliest days here in this country, and I believe people want to preserve it. And if we, so we need to vote no, and make it important enough for people to want to come to town meeting, rather than think, oh, well, I can just go and vote sometime. I don't need to go to town meeting, and it will make town meeting irrelevant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia Mata. Further discussion? Ms. Bellata.
Kathy Bellata, 21 Pine Street. So I'm here because I was a dissenting vote on the Select Board, voting in favor of this article, and I wanted to explain why. As much as I appreciate the dialogue, debate, and learning that happens at town meeting, and I've been attending town meetings for 25-plus years, this format simply does not allow every voter to participate. If you physically can't be here, you don't get a vote. I have had neighbors, you know, while I've been on the Select Board for a little over a year and a half, I've always encouraged people to, you know, attend town meeting, see you there, and I've had more than one of my neighbors say they just physically can't sit in these chairs for three or four hours. They don't have a vote. I, myself, have had to miss a handful of town meetings because of business travel I just couldn't get out of. A lot of the times, it didn't matter too much because it was a vote on an annual budget, something that wasn't long-term, but there was, there were a couple of votes that were zoning issues, and I didn't have a voice. I respect Town Council's opinion that perhaps this change might not be allowed by the Attorney General, but if we pass the article tonight and the Attorney General's office rejects it, we will receive an accurate explanation of why it's illegal, and then, if the petitioners want to take it forward, they can use that information to pursue a legal path to get the law changed at the state level. My reasoning here is we shouldn't avoid trying to make a change to a law because we're afraid it might be illegal. We should take a shot, get the feedback from the Attorney General, and go from there. In closing, I agree with everything Mr. Keough just said. Absolutely, this is not a spectator sport, but by definition, not everybody can participate. So my reason for supporting this article is simple. Democracy works best when more people cast a vote. Zoning changes are like Proposition 2 and 1/2 overrides. I mean, anything with a long-term financial impact requires a ballot vote. To me, this is the same. It's a long-term impact, and everyone deserves a chance to cast their vote. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bellata. I just want to say that I sympathize with all of you sitting in those chairs. One of the great privileges of being moderator is that I get to stand. Further discussion? Yes? No, behind you.
Wendy Dixon, 295 Summer Street. I move the question.
Well, is that seconded? That's a 2/3 vote, as you know from earlier in the evening. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it. Thank you, and if you're opposed, I have no doubt the motion for the question prevails by more than 2/3. So now we'll vote on Mr. Evans's motion, which is to amend the general bylaw to require all zoning amendments to go to the ballot vote. This is a majority vote. If you're in favor of that, please raise your right hand with the yellow card in it. Thank you, and if you're opposed, I have no doubt that the motion does not prevail by a majority. Article 13 pertains to town conservation land at Powderhouse Hill, and I'll recognize Donna First for the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the motion under Article 13 as presented in the handout provided at the special town meeting.
And is that seconded? It's seconded. Thank you, Ms. First.
Oh, sorry. First, let me remark on the history of Powderhouse Hill Reservation. According to the book Conservation: Manchester by the Sea, 1945 to 1995, written by Helen Bethel, the first two purchases of Powderhouse were for municipal purposes in 1810. In 1913, Town Meeting voted to buy 12.3 acres and the still-standing timber from a section of the hill off of Friend Street. In 1936, another 23 acres bordering Pine Street were added. This was voted in at Town Meeting to prevent large-scale timbering and preserve its natural beauty. These activities have led to the town to owning the four parcels you are being asked to vote on tonight. In addition, some of Powderhouse Hill Reservation is already in permanent conservation via a land conservation trust. In 1963, the Manchester Conservation Trust purchased 9.2 acres from Norman Welch, a resident of Manchester by the Sea at the time. Today, that lot is recorded as parcel 41035. It is owned and permanently conserved by the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. Next, let's understand what Article 97 is. Mass Law, known as Article 97, establishes a right to a clean environment, including its natural, scenic, historical, and aesthetic qualities for the citizens. Article 97 also declares the conservation of natural resources a public purpose and provides that land or easement subject to Article 97 shall not be used for other purposes without 2/3 roll-call vote on the legislature. So why should we vote yes on Article 13? Powderhouse Hill Reservation is a wooded gem in the heart of our town that has been preserved and enjoyed for many generations. Tonight, you have the incredible opportunity to join with the Select Board and the Planning Boards to ensure the priceless woods in the center of our town are conserved, along with what MECT already owns. Please vote yes on 13. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. First. So a couple of preliminary comments. Town Council has advised that this motion requires a 2/3 vote under state law, and although Articles 13 and 14 both pertain to Powderhouse Hill, they have very different consequences. Town Council has also advised us that Powderhouse Hill is already subject to Article 97 based on a 1977 vote of Town Meeting. So this motion will confirm that status and no reason not to. Article 14, however, does represent a change in status. For that reason, I don't think that discussing them together will enhance our discussion or our consideration of them together. Therefore, we'll discuss the two separately. So if you have comments on Article 14, please hold them until we get there. Last, under Article 4, Section 8 of the town's general bylaw, the Planning Board has submitted a report as required, and they will discuss their recommendation. Finally, I recognize John Round for the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This citizen petition article seeks to provide conservation protection for several parcels of land on Powderhouse Hill by making them permanently dedicated to the protections of Article 97. As Ms. First earlier said, that was passed in 1972 and declares the conservation of natural resources a public purpose. The law does, however, allow for exchanges of similar land in certain circumstances subject to a 2/3 affirmative roll-call vote of the state legislature. Now, in 1977, the town voted to put these parcels under the care of the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. The land has been used for passive recreation ever since. As the moderator stated, our Town Council has advised us that based on this fact and subsequent case law, these parcels are highly likely to already be subject to Article 97. Nevertheless, the Select Board is in favor of reaffirming this through this article, and these parcels are subject to Article 97. We recommend your approval for Article 13.
Thank you, Mr. Round. And I'll recognize Steve Gang, the Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator, and deep thanks to all of you for coming out tonight. It's an extraordinary turnout, especially for a fall meeting, and it really vindicates everything that Tom Keough said earlier. I really have very little to add to what's already been said. The Concom has been managing the three parcels and with the collaboration of MECT, the remaining acreage of Powderhouse Hill for almost 50 years. And we have done the necessary trail work, usually annually. We've had appropriated funds and found people, sometimes volunteers, sometimes professionals, depending on the magnitude of the deadfalls and the widowmakers that needed to be taken care of. And this has all been done to keep it a natural resource, permanently conserved, whether or not it's part of Article 97, but in fact, the Concom believes that it is from the get-go from 1977 vote. So there is no harm certainly in reaffirming that, and therefore, I certainly support this motion, although at the end of the day, it isn't necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gang. And I'll recognize Chris Olney for the recommendation of the Planning Board.
Good evening, everyone. Our general bylaw requires an opinion from the Planning Board when a warrant article deals with land use. But the question here is not whether the land should be protected as natural open space since Powderhouse Reservation is and has been under the control of the Conservation Commission since 1977. That's over 45 years. The reservation is already subject to the protections of Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution, and I won't go into all of the protections that that involves. Since the land is already protected, this article merely states what is already the case, and so it's a moot point, really, but the Planning Board does support the recommendation of the Select Board to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Olney. Further discussion? Yes, sir. No, you have to wait for the mic. Sorry.
Tess, I just have one quick question on 13 and 14.
We're not going to take up 14. We're only doing 13.
Okay. On the management of the properties, is there provision in it to manage it for, say, things to prevent like forest fires and things like that in it? Is there any current provision in any of that, you know, basically land management?
Mr. Gang, can you respond to that? Thank you.
So it's a great question because from time to time, although happily not for some decades, there have been some serious fires in some of the woodlands in Manchester. We don't do any regular removal of brush or other kinds of fire prevention methods, but I understand that there is a multi-town effort underway right now to look at the ways we can collaborate to minimize the dangers of fire, particularly in the face of climate change. So I'd be happy to give people more information on that, which I don't have with me tonight, but I'd be, just give us a ring in the Conservation Office in Seaside One or just contact me.
Thank you, Mr. Gang. Further discussion? Yes? Ms. Dixon.
Wendy Dixon, 295 Summer Street. Just a question, Mr. Moderator, and depending on the answer, I may or may not have a follow-up question. Are these parcels the ones that some people were hoping could be used for more affordable housing or senior housing or something, which is why the ambiguity surfaced to begin with? And now we want to really lock it in that it is indeed conservation?
Okay, Mr. Fettishfield.
So one of the parcels, 4204, abuts Newport Park.
Right.
And there's been a very preliminary discussion about the possibility of, well, there's been a preliminary discussion about expanding Newport Park, and one of the options might be to move up the hill a bit, which would be on town land. That would require a multi-pronged process of obtaining approval to do that. So it would require 2/3 vote of both the House and Senate in Beacon Hill, it would require 2/3 vote of this body, it requires unanimous vote of the Conservation Commission. Those are already in place, we feel, because of Article 97, we feel is already applied to these lands. This is reaffirming that, so it doesn't really change that dynamic. The reason why it might be advantageous is some of the other lands that is owned by the Housing Authority has other natural features that are more sensitive, wetlands in particular, whereas a small portion of the land behind the row going south, southeast, is less sensitive lands. The short answer is there'd be a lot of processes that would have to go through before that might be a possibility, and in either case, that process is the same because we already consider this to be uncovered by Article 97.
Do you have a follow-up question, Ms. Dixon?
Just a follow-up statement, and that is, I hope that it is the sense of the meeting that the balance between preserving nature and I have tree things, save the trees, there's no planet bee on the back of my car, so, but that the affordable housing and senior housing is so critically important that we will at some point have to find land and make sacrifices, and trees unfortunately will need to come down. So if we are unwittingly absolutely shutting a door on something that apparently has some ambiguity, or we wouldn't even have a motion asking us to affirm it, I just hope that we will be thoughtful about the fact we will have to make sacrifices at some point for these other types of uses of the land involving homes for people, affordable or senior. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Further discussion? Okay, as I said, this is a 2/3 vote. I'm going to try it by voice first. If you're in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. I have no doubt it prevails by more than 2/3. And Article 14, as I said, also relates to Powderhouse Hill, and I'll recognize Morgan Evans for the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the motion as printed in the handout.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is that seconded? It's seconded. Remarks, Mr. Evans?
Yes, I'd like to summarize the article in the handout. The motion I make authorizes the Select Board to convey to the town of Manchester by the Sea to a charitable trust whose purpose includes the preservation of land and water, a perpetual conservation restriction, in the parcels making up Powderhouse Hill Reservation for the purpose of retaining open space. So the difference here in 14 versus 13, 13, and thank you very much for reaffirming Article 97, the conservation restriction goes from the possibility of a land swap and the ambiguity and the other purposes in future generations when both the need for affordable housing and for open space will be even greater. We saw in the pandemic, people craved the open space. We saw all the parks being used more. There will be more pressure for both, and I believe there is room for both. There's lots of talks at various boards, various places we can expand affordable housing. What is unique, one of the many unique things of this fantastic town that we all love, and that's why we're here, is that open space in the middle of town. It is priceless. It is almost unique. So what does voting yes for Article 14 mean? It authorizes the Select Board to work with the Conservation Land Trust to place a conservation restriction on the reservation, also known as Town Woods. Town Woods is the center of town. The specific conservation trust is to be chosen by the Select Board. We're all, have high confidence in our Select Board. They'll do a great job. As was mentioned, and as you can see in the handout with the map on the back, there are four town-owned parcels that are contiguous next to one already owned by Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. The point of Article 14, much like belts and suspenders, is to make sure that this priceless land in the middle of our town stays forever to be enjoyed by future generations. People, there'll be a future town meetings 350 years from now as we follow those 350 years before us. So I ask you to vote on Article 14. I ask you to vote yes. It's the only method to ensure open space for all generations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I'll recognize John Round for the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The citizen petition article seeks to further protect several parcels of land on Powderhouse Hill by establishing or assigning a third-party charitable trust to oversee the conservation restrictions conferred on the land through Article 97. This motion would not change any of the land's current rigorous conservation restrictions. The land has been under the supervision of the Conservation Commission since 1977, as I earlier said, and in our estimation, it's been managed well. The motion would add another layer of management, whose approval would be needed in the event of a land exchange is pursued as provided for Article 97, as was also mentioned earlier. We don't think that an additional management group will appreciably reduce the probability or affect the chance of success involved in a land exchange, but it could add complexity to the land's supervision. And I should add that with regard to Article 97 and any kind of a land swap that's considered, the state will only consider a swap where the public good is involved. And I think, as Ms. Dixon indicated earlier, senior housing is something that might be considered under that, but it has to be a land swap and only a land swap. So we do not recommend your approval of Article 14.
Thank you, Mr. Round. And I'll recognize Chris Olney for the recommendation of the Planning Board, which was required under Article 4, Section 8 of the general bylaw.
And it's also my pleasure to tell you this is the last warrant article, so once we get through this, we can go. So the citizen's proposal goes further than just endorsing Article 97, and it would authorize a transfer of control of the reservation through a conservation easement to an unnamed, independent, non-governmental organization. So my question is, in what the Planning Board wants to know is, why would we do this? Don't we have faith in the Conservation Commission or in the strict Don't we have faith in the Conservation Commission or in the strict protections of Article 97? Do we want this unnamed organization to dictate how we residents can enjoy the land? Is there an organization actually willing to take on the responsibility and the cost? Ironically, all the provisions of Article 97 would need to be satisfied to make this transfer happen, including approval by two-thirds vote of both houses of the state legislature and unanimous consent of the Conservation Commission. We're all for the preservation of conservation areas, but this seems to be a solution for a problem that does not exist. And the Planning Board supports the recommendation of the Select Board and asks you to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Olney. And I'll again recognize Steve Gang, the Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Let me start out with a confession. I think it may have been Helen Bethel, my predecessor as Concom Chair, and I who kind of kicked this hornet nest in the first place. We looked at the property currently owned by the Housing Authority on which Newport Park sits, and the only area on their property where they can expand is delicate freshwater marsh bordering vegetated wetland and a perennial stream that feeds Bennett Brook. So maybe they would be able to work their way around the Wetlands Protection Act and the local general wetlands bylaw. But whether or not they did, it's a terrible place to build anything in terms of the natural resources that the town really values. And you can't hike through the marsh, I'll just say that in advance, but you can look at it and you can see the owls that live above it, you can see the migratory birds that settle into it, you can see all kinds of stuff that comes up in the spring and turns beautiful colors in the fall. It's an incredibly valuable little section of Powderhouse Hill. And I mention all of this because we had this, what we thought was a clever idea, that since Article 97, although it's very difficult and time-consuming to swap land, allows land swaps if there's no net loss and there's an argument that somehow you have increased the natural resource value. So we looked just south of Newport Park's property is town-owned land that is not jurisdictional for wetlands. In other words, there's no requirements, nothing to protect there. There are some trees that would have to come down, that happens anytime you build something. So we had this clever idea that we could swap. And we trial-ballooned it with the Affordable Housing Trust, and they saw some merit in it. And then the next thing I knew, we had two warrant articles in front of us. So I would recommend also, and this is not on behalf of the Concom because due to the late arrival of these things, we haven't had a chance to debate them and vote on them, but as Concom Chair and a fellow voter, I'd say there's two reasons not to take this action. The first is that the protections of Article 97 are already very powerful, and you could argue quite a lot whether you could increase those even slightly by putting a third party, a private land trust or conservation organization into the mix. Private parties can go bankrupt, they can be embezzled, they can fail for all kinds of reasons. Those things generally don't happen to towns, and when they do, the remedies are much more straightforward. So I'm not sure it improves in any way the protections. And second is, it's going to be a pain in the neck, very time-consuming, very lengthy, and uncertain outcome to make this transfer. It has to pass Concom unanimously, it has to pass this body by two-thirds, and it has to have a two-thirds roll call vote in each house, each part of the state legislature. And there has to be a reason for that. So I thought to myself, what would I tell Bruce Tar is the reason that we have to bring a private party into this? And I can't think of an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gang. Is there discussion? Yes, sir.
Nathan Fanton, 10 University Lane. I remember reading something, I get the Conservation Essex, Manchester Essex Conservation Newsletter, and there was an article and kind of a thank you to one of the members of that trust a while back, and they talked about how the trust actually sold land that belonged to the trust to a private individual who eventually returned it back over a period of time. So while the current trustees and the individuals who support the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust have, you know, my faith and belief in that they will personally ensure through the process of the trust, we see evidence already that at times past, they've sold land to private individuals. What if that individual decides that they don't want to sell it back at the time, or give it to their kids, or sell it to a real estate developer because people and ideas and minds change? I think that we should continue with the protections that are afforded because it does require so many people to be involved in it. Once property and physical land exits the town's hand and goes to a private trust, that trust, by their bylaws and their rules, can do whatever they see fit with it. And while the intentions of the trust may be in line with what we see at this particular time, it may not be in 50, 60, 100 years, or whenever they decide that it's time for them to go out of business, or they may decide that it's too cost prohibitive for them to maintain certain pieces of property and sell it off to somebody. I have serious concerns about us giving any town land to any entity other than the town.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Moderator, thank you for letting me respond to that. There was some miscommunication or misunderstanding what the Article 14 does. It does not transfer the land. It does not take away the Concom's role, but much has been stated here, it adds another role, so it adds a third role. And we already have plenty of examples of private, nonprofit, charitable trusts, conservation trusts protecting land. If you go to the back of the blue, you'll see an example of town-owned land with a conservation trust, only, I think it's only, by a third party. And I certainly hope this parcel is also enjoyed by our future generations. It is the parcel known alternately as Clara B. Winthrop Reservation or Children's Field. As you drive out of town on Bridge Street on the right, you just passed the horse farm, and you've got that beautiful open vista. Now, it is possible we'll do some sort of land swap if only the town owns it. It is much less possible, much less likely, if both the conservation trust and a private nonprofit conservation trust. So the first one is the Conservation Commission and a conservation trust hold each other to the highest standards. That is the entire purpose of this. It is to add a conservation trust so you have a trust but verified. Belts and suspenders, we double-protect the land. Nobody knows, the points were well-made, but I think in my favor, in the favor of passing this and asking you to vote yes, that we don't know what some future conservation committee will decide, we don't know what some future state legislature will decide. And so if you want to conserve this land in perpetuity, and again, I thank you for Article 13, for doing it for now, but not forever, now I'm asking you to protect this land forever, just as we like other land. Now, towards affordable housing, I, we have a number of spots we can put affordable housing. I'm asking you to protect this one spot. I wasn't going to mention any spots, but you know, one obvious spot is a DPW site. There's plans afoot.
Mr. Darrell, excuse me, but you're over two minutes.
Thank you. So there are, we should do both, expand affordable housing and protect the town woods. Thank you.
Mr. Bothwick.
Jay Bothwick, Boardman Ab. We've had a great discussion tonight about town meeting and the process that things get to before they reach town meeting. I think this is an article that is relatively late to the process, hasn't been through a lot of discussion at Planning Board, at the Select Board, Finance Committee, and I think that while this may be something we should consider in the future, I don't think it's appropriate to consider now because I don't think it's been fully vetted. I think we ought to look at the alternatives, including affordable housing, as has been discussed, and see whether we want to take this next step. I'm not saying we would never do it, I just don't think it's the right time to do it now. I don't think we've had enough time to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bothwick.
I'd like to call the question.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Is that seconded?
It's seconded.
It's seconded. This is a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, please raise your right hand with a yellow card in it. Thank you, and if you're opposed. I have no doubt the motion to cut off debate prevails by more than two-thirds. And now we'll vote on Mr. Evans's motion. This is also a two-thirds vote under state law. If you're in favor of Mr. Evans's motion, please raise the card in your right hand. Thank you, and if you're opposed, please raise the card. I have no doubt the motion does not prevail by two-thirds. And Ann Harrison moves to dissolve the special town meeting, and John Round seconds. If you're in favor of dissolving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote, I so declare it.
Thank you all for your time.
I declare the meeting dissolved, and thank you all for coming and for such a good discussion.